Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's Yountville Town Council for Tuesday, March 20th, 2018. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Durham?
Here.
Councilmember Dorman?
Here.
Councilmember Moller?
Here.
Vice Mayor Doran Becker?
Here.
Mayor Dunbar?
Here. Please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which stands in the nation under God, indivisible, with all its resources.
Thank you. What I would like to do now is hold a moment of silence, as I know all of us here locally are very aware of the tragic events that happened a week and a half ago where we lost the lives of three brave women who had dedicated themselves to serving veterans that needed their mental health support. I know many, if not all, of us were in attendance last night at our celebration of their lives: Dr. Jennifer Gray Golick, Christine Lober, and Dr. Jennifer Gonzalez Shushariba. What I would like to do is hold a moment of silence right now in their memory. Thank you very much. The Vice Mayor would like to offer a personal presentation.
I wrote this on Wednesday, and it's dedicated to the three extraordinary women: Dr. Jennifer Gray Golick, Christine Lober, and Dr. Gonzalez Shushariba. It's called "Heartbroken Elegy." Friday, when the moon rose, she turned her luminous face away from the Yountville village so we wouldn't see her tears. Saturday was eerily quiet and sighed with sorrow, numbed by pain, wishing for a better day. Sunday sent a shroud of fog to wrap Yountville in a blanket of visible tears that muted voices railing in pain. Monday, at Town Hall, grown men and women cried and said that weeping isn't weak because our innocents had died. Tuesday, the rain agreed and fell with furious passion to cleanse the lovely village of the horror it had seen. On Wednesday, when we gathered, there were shadows everywhere in the eyes of every neighbor, reflections painfully aware brave women had been cut down, including one with child, by a broken man who served our country, and he had died inside. Our warriors are blameless; we ask them to be cruel, and some can never come back to a village so civil. And though the lilacs were about to bloom, instead they hung their heads. To think of the lives lost Friday, spring went back to bed.
I will also be asking that when we adjourn tonight's meeting, that we adjourn in honor of the three brave women who lost their lives. So now we will move on to our, what I'll call, regular business, even though we do it with heavy hearts for our community and the families that are suffering. We'll move on to the adoption of our agenda for tonight. Is there an action?
Fill move. Sorry. Didn't hit the button.
There's a motion and a second?
A second.
All in favor, please signify on your screens. Thank you. Public comment? We see no public, so there'll be no comment. Consent calendar items, we have five listed. I do have one question. I don't need to pull item 6C, but I'd just like to ask a question. Joe's in the back of the room. I'm just going to say, with the barrier project, Steve, maybe you can answer this, are the old railings going to be removed, or are they going to be there? Because there's certainly been some resident comments about, not only does it look like an overabundance of railings, but it's kind of an eyesore as well.
I'll start with Jefferson. The low, old-station-style metal guardrails have been removed. The ones on Washington are a different story. What we will be doing is painting them brown in the rust color so that they blend in, but because of the design structure of the bridge surface, those aren't scheduled to be removed. They are just not adequate. So the design solution was to put the new rails inside of the existing, but we will paint those so that they will blend in better with the situation.
So there's no way to cut those railings off at the concrete? Because I understand the concrete, and now I guess I'm asking Joe to come forward.
I'm afraid, yeah, that's a public works technical question.
So if there is a way to cut that one inner railing off, but if that's not possible?
So those railings were constructed along with utilities that run alongside them, and to remove those railings would also require a little bit of utility relocation, and that would have driven the cost of that project exceedingly high, and it wouldn't have allowed us to really do much with that project based on the budget, so.
Well, are those utilities in that concrete that's?
They run alongside the piece of railing on the outside.
So you can't cut that old railing, like, use a, I mean, I don't know how to do it, but a blowtorch to cut those things off?
No, 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 no. It's a concrete railing, so it would actually be demoed with a jackhammer and taken out in kind of the more old-fashioned way.
Got it.
So it was a much tougher project than, as the town manager alluded to, the ones on Jefferson, we use a blowtorch and cut those away, and that was a pretty straightforward removal process. The ones on Washington are made of concrete. It's an old WPA-style project, so they were made to basically sustain an accident, and you hose it off and wait for the next accident, I think, was the reason, the line of thinking with those types of structures. So lasted quite a while. I think it was constructed in the mid-'30s. However, it doesn't meet the most current standards we have for impact resistance and kind of absorbing the impact and helping the people who are in the accident be able to walk away rather than have some other outcome.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
So as I said, I didn't feel the need to pull that item. I wanted to get some clarification on that. So without any other questions, is there an action on our consent calendar items?
Make a motion. We approve consent.
Second.
Here, we need your mic.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, please vote, or just cast your vote. The consent calendar passes unanimously. We're going to, we have no presentations, no public hearings. We'll go to our first administrative item, 9A, Housing Element Progress Report.
Good evening. Tonight you have before you the town's annual progress report to the California Department of Housing and Community Development for the year 2017, and the report reports on the town's progress in meeting the goals, policies, and programs of the housing element, and that housing element runs for a period of 2015 through 2023. The town, the first time the town filed the annual progress report was in 2016, and when we went to input this year's numbers, we realized we'd missed an opportunity to count 2014 and 2015 because those units were included in the housing element update. So we've included those on two different columns in your report tonight. We've been in communication with HCD, and they acknowledge that those units may be fairly counted in this report. However, they will have one modification in that they'll all be grouped into the year 2015, the same number, and that's because the town's housing element runs from 2015 to 2023. And the reason that we're permitted to count the 2014 units is because those permits issued in 2014, and they were identified in the town's housing element. So what we see is that we're meeting the housing production goals for all of the four income categories, including low and very low. Those are the real priority categories, and that is good news for the town. Earlier this year, I think it was in January, we brought you a report on the SB 35 Streamlining Report that was released, and that report creates, has three tiers of compliance with the town, or with the state housing goals. One, the top tier, is for those jurisdictions that are meeting all income categories for housing production, and there were 13 jurisdictions noted. We believe, through our communication with HCD, that because of these modifications, when they update it quarterly, will bump up into that top group. We're currently in the second group, which has 148 jurisdictions, but we're in that group because we had failed to report the low and the very low. And then most California communities, 378 of them, are in the lowest category, and they're either not meeting their housing production goals, or they're failing to submit the report. So we think it's a positive correction and that the numbers will all be modified. They do show that we're on target for meeting our housing production goals, and we expect to be bumped up on that report on permit streamlining. Thank you.
Does that factor in some of the affordable units that have been lost over the years that we could count toward affordable price if they were, they turned over from an original affordable-level ownership to family that then doesn't have to meet those affordability requirements? We've had a few of those units over the years.
So...
Do you know what I'm asking? Do we lose some of those categories? Because that unit goes from an affordable unit to a market-rate unit?
No. This APR report and then the permit streamlining report, they only count new units, so if we are to lose a unit, that doesn't count. The town has recently been involved, though, in purchasing an at-risk unit for where a buyer was in violation of the agreement that they had to meet the affordable standards or to live there as an owner-occupant, and we've had the opportunity to purchase the unit, sell it to Napa Community House.
Napa.
Where they rent it, and I've been in discussion with HCD over whether we can count those units. We cannot, because we would need to have a program in our general plan that says that we go in and purchase those units, and it would obligate us to go in and purchase those units, but then we would have to bump the affordability level down by one, so a moderate would go to a low, or a low would go to a very low. It's something that can be considered when we update our housing element if we want to obligate ourselves to a program like that. But, what is my point? So we're unable to count some of those units that we are preserving for a longer affordability term.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions? Councilmember Durham?
So if I read this report right, so far the two additional ADUs that have been approved fall into moderate?
Yes.
And so there's another one, and there'll probably be more. What determines whether it's moderate or very low? Is it the price that they'll get for rental, or the price? Please.
So they are by default moderate units. They're not rented at a market rate, and that's because of the size of the units and what they're expected to rent for. It's really harder to classify them in the low or the very low categories, and I think absent a deed restriction for those two categories, we won't be able to report on those, even though there's an opportunity for non-deed restricted in the report before you.
So we are able to list them on this housing element even if they're not being rented out?
Correct. Because they satisfy a housing need. It may be that they are able to accommodate children of the owners who come back and live, and that's a housing need. They may be able to house caregivers for the primary residence. So it's not always just a rental housing stock, but a housing need in general that the report is looking to satisfy.
Thank you.
Other questions this way? Councilwoman Dorman?
I don't have a question. I'd just like to say I met with our planning director, and thank you very much. You gave a good explanation of the chart. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, I noticed that on the report, the actual report, under number 21, it says, "Where conversions of residentially zoned land to commercial uses is permitted require provisions for adequate affordable housing to compensate for the loss of residential units." And my question is, going forward, if we were to use the residential-scale commercial for Old Town, would we require them to also have adequate affordable housing to compensate?
Let me read this for one second. So the way we've interpreted this provision in the past is where there is an affordable unit that is lost upon the redesignation of a property, then that would have to be replaced. I would say probably the most recent redesignation from Old Town Historic to residential-scale commercial was the Heston property, and we know that they had several units that were lower-income by default. They weren't deed-restricted, and so there was no requirement that they be replaced on a one-per-one basis, although they do have an owner's unit on that property.
So, but if we were, for example, to do an overlay in a certain neighborhood of Old Town on several residences, would we require that affordable units?
Sorry, I didn't follow up on that. So in, let's say, the parcels that are being discussed as part of the general plan update, six parcels on North Washington, those are all market-rate units, so a provision to replace those units would not be required based on the current housing element, but we have other policies that address housing in the land-use element where that could be part of the requirement that maybe a second-floor unit is retained or some type of in-lu fee is paid. So if those parcels were to change, we could come up with a requirement, even though they're not affordable? If I'm answering that in a coherent way.
Those would be lost in our housing element count for the RENA numbers, then. We would have to...
No.
You don't lose six housing units.
No. Correct, Gary?
I believe so.
Yeah.
You believe so, that, no, we don't lose them?
So is this, if I'm just trying to...
If we have six residential units that are converted to commercial, do we lose those six on our RENA count?
I don't think so, but it may require rezoning other parcels for residential use, if you're rezoning from residential to commercial. If they require that.
Yeah, I don't think in all instances. It's whether the units were identified in the housing element. So, for example, the Humboldt Street vacant parcels, those are identified in our housing element as satisfying housing. So if those get rezoned, those have a different trigger under the housing element law. I don't think that same provision would apply up on North Washington. We can look into it. But those weren't identified as satisfying housing, and simply by losing housing, it doesn't trigger replacement housing. It has to be identified in the housing element.
Well, in this report, number 21 doesn't make that specific claim. It just says, "Where conversion of residentially zoned land to commercial use is permitted, require provisions for adequate affordable housing to compensate for the loss of residential units." It doesn't say that they were already affordable.
That's correct.
So that may be something to consider. Thank you.
Other questions of the staff report? Seeing none, I invite all the members of the public that are in attendance to come with questions or comments. Okay, thank you. Move ahead for any further discussion or action on this item. Anyone would like to go first, or shall I call on someone?
I'll make a motion.
Okay. Councilmember Moller?
We approve Resolution Number 18-3465, approve and authorize staff to submit the 2017 Annual Housing Element Progress Report to the State of California Department of Housing and Community Development.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. Please vote. When you see your screen, that passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Onto our next item, General Fund Budget Adjustment. We are going to do a little seat-changing, and Maria, when you are ready.
I am ready. So before you tonight, we have a council report that we bring traditionally, at least in this organization, when we review our budget and see that an adjustment is needed in the middle of the year, or somewhat a little bit closer to the end of the year, if you really want to get technical. In summary, we've had two things that are affecting our budget this year related to our transient occupancy tax revenue. We've had the fires, as you know, and then we have some heavy construction projects that are causing some hotel rooms to become offline. And so the good news about the results of our insurance claim for a fire is that we know we're going to be able to recover some of that through an insurance claim, some of the revenue that we lost. And so even in considering the insurance claim that we'll receive, the insurance refund we will receive, and in adjusting all of the other revenues as they are performing now and things that we know are coming, we felt it important to come in and update you on where we are year-to-date. And so really, in the grand scheme of things, even with the loss of revenue and the payment that we're receiving from the insurance company, we're proposing to increase general fund revenues by $348,000, and 348,344. So that's the net change. The staff report that I've drafted, that I wrote for you, has sort of line-by-line the major areas that were changed, why they were changed. So we tried to leave, you know, everything in detail for you. And then we also had to look at expenses, and so really the biggest expense that we have, that we knew at budget adoption would change things, is the increase to the fire contract costs. And so that's the reason for increasing general fund expenses by $138,000. And so the only other element that we have in the staff report is a delay in the transfer to our CIP fund. So in the adopted budget and through the year-end report, the total programmed CIP fund transfer from the general fund to the CIP fund was $438,000. So in the staff report, I'm recommending that we delay that transfer, and I'll explain that in just a minute. The other thing that the staff report asks is for permission to use the legal contingency fund if it's needed. And so at the end of the year, in July or in June, after we post all the different expenses that come in and adjust all the revenues and recognize everything, we work on making sure that the balance is budget, that the budget is balanced, and we also get ready for the audit. And so when we get ready for the audit, we sort of make journal entries for things that are necessary and find minor corrections and nothing really material. But the reason we're choosing to recommend these changes now is because should we have extra legal expenses in the year through June, and should potentially something else happen with TOT revenue that's unexpected, we might not have time in between all the different things to come back and say, now we've got to adjust for A, B, C, and D for TOT. So we need a little bit of flexibility, and the easiest way to have some flexibility is to delay the CIP transfer of $438,000. The reason I call it a delay is because if, at the year-end, the budget balances or we have extra revenues, we'll transfer that money over into the CIP fund. As you might recall, usually sometime between September and December, when we close our books, we come to you and we say, we've got excess money in the general fund after all the revenues and expenditures, and we usually recommend places where we can allocate those funds. So we'll do that again this year, sometime between September and December, when we close our books, finish with our auditors, and do all of that. So leaving this $438,000 will just allow us that flexibility to balance the budget, should there be an additional shortfall with this construction project potentially not finishing on time and things like that. The reason that I'm asking for, if needed, on the legal contingency is because I'm trying to be optimistic, and if we don't need to tap into it, we won't. We'll just continue to draw on the revenues and expenditures that we have. Right now, the town attorney budget has about $45,000 left in it, and so that's the reason for trying to just leave some funds available in a flexible state. I think that kind of covers it. I wrote this in a simple, bulleted fashion to kind of try and walk you through most of these things, and I feel it's self-explanatory, but, you know, after a while, when you're a finance person, you're looking at the numbers so much, you feel like you understand it completely, and then you explain it to someone, and maybe sometimes it doesn't. So I guess I'll just open it up for questions, and then we can go from there.
Great. Thank you very much. Other questions of this very clear and concisely presented report? Councilwoman Dorman?
Thank you. So what we're planning for is, for April, May, or June, we're thinking we may need $438,000 extra in the general fund.
We're just preparing in case we do, in case we have a shortfall.
I mean, I would, and this really is, this is more discussion, but is there a way through your position to make sure that goes, assuming we don't need it, to make sure that goes to capital projects sooner rather than later?
Yes, we can do that, too. And so the reason that I mentioned year-end and coming to you with the audit is because I will park that note. I mean, I'm bound to not forget this $438,000, and I won't. I'll bring it to you. And we'll do that transfer so that it materializes either in this fiscal year or next fiscal year. A lot of that time, it's just semantics of timing. The auditor forces you to close the books for, you know, and then you've got to, but we can still put that in there because I will have to come to you as part of that process with a year-end fund balance, and I'll report to you and say, by the way, remember the $438,000 we delayed? We have it still. We're going to put it over there. Or we didn't have it, and here's why, but here's how much is left. Where would you like to put it? And then we'll revisit that. So it will come up for sure.
And have we gotten insurance recovery?
We will, very soon, and it's going to be about $499,000.
And do we expect that? Because our general fund revenue is up 348,000, and we have an extra expense of 138,000. So we're up net 210,000. So plus the $438,000, we're up, that's 650,000. So, I mean, it seems to be we're in pretty good shape, and I get that we want to have flexibility on the funds, but I just want to make, the insurance is going to make us whole.
That's what we're hoping for. So I just want to think good thoughts for all that construction that's going on out there, and then we're going to be good.
And when do we expect the insurance recovery?
Sometime before June 30th. We've got, we've got timing on that. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Well, one thing I just want to stress, I think Councilmember Dorman is spot-on. Most of this is a timing issue and a what-if, one of these payments, for example, if the insurance check arrives on July 3rd, different fiscal year, because I want to really stress to everybody, you're not hearing a recommendation to draw down from your revenue stabilization fund. What you're really talking about is a timing issue where we need a little float, if you will, and then we will put the money back in the same spot. Same thing, as you all know, this year it's been a little higher on legal. That's why we have a legal contingency. We've got a few more cases in code enforcement. So really what we're doing is being, I think, incredibly transparent to the council about how we're managing the books and the programs, but I also think it's important that we share with you some of the baselines, because when a revenue goes up or down, that will impact how you see the presentation of the budget shortly. It's also incredibly important, when you get into the public safety costs, now that we know we have a significant, and we've been talking about that for two years, that that price was going to come in on fire, now we know that that number is. So this is also formally adjusting those so that the basis that we start with. I feel very optimistic. I will feel equally optimistic when I start seeing, as does Maria, when we start seeing a return of some of the vintage rooms, because I think for us, the timeline, we've mapped it out, but if that timeline moves a month, you know, I don't know that that's going to be $438,000, but it could be several, you know, it could be $60,000 to $80,000. So again, when she talks about being proactive, this is giving us that flexibility within those areas.
But this is being extremely conservative and extremely transparent. Like, this is something that could be happening at your desk, and you don't even need to tell us about it, frankly.
Well, I think I should.
But that's not the way we are.
I know, I know. Because you're talking about something that may or may not even happen. It's not happening, so. Okay, Vice Mayor?
I just wanted to check. I remember that in discussions about the CIP, we were talking about it being a lighter version this year, too, with not as many projects. Are there any projects that this might impact?
There won't be any impacts. One of the really great things about your CIP fund is it's a separate fund altogether, and that fund in it of its own has $2 million in it right now. So it's okay. If the money doesn't go there, it's still okay.
Right. The most likely scenario is that, if you remember, we established the new equipment replacement reserve and facility equipment reserve. The most likely target would be that we would not fully fund the same dollar amount. The $2 million that Maria mentioned would still be there for projects that were identified, and we are going into a lighter year. and, and we are going into a lighter year. You've got a couple coming up. We'll make sure we add the Wi-Fi and community network, but we have a reasonable base, especially as we transition into new funding structures for streets and roads with SB 1 and Measure T. But it's also, you know, there's a timing issue with some of that as we transition into that. But I do agree with the fact that we are being very transparent and letting you know how we're going about doing what we do.
Oh, I appreciate it, and I appreciate that kind of feedback, that you, you trust us, and that you think that we, that we don't necessarily need to come here, and I just appreciate being able to have that dialogue, and that you understand how much we value keeping you informed. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, if we had a water or sewer line break, then we have a different conversation.
Absolutely.
And then we might need those funds sooner than later. But in current conditions, we're, we're in a very safe place. Okay, great. Any other questions, members of the public? There are no members of the public, so is there action to be had by the council? I bet there is.
Yes, keep this moving. I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution Number 18-3466, approving fiscal year 2017/18 General Fund Budget Amendments to Adjust Changes in Revenue and Expenditures and Receive Permission to Use Legal Contingency as Allowed by the Legal Contingency Allocation for Unanticipated Legal and Litigation Costs If Necessary, with emphasis.
And is there a second?
A second.
Please cast your vote. That passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Do we have any staff informational reports?
Yes, Mayor.
No. Yes, we do.
Sorry.
The clerk, the clerk is going to give us, she's going to tell us about this.
Yes, I am. I wanted to let residents know that the Napa County Election Division is holding a Voters' Choice Act workshop at the Yountville Community Center in the Art Room on Wednesday, March 21st at 6:00 PM. And if people are wondering what the Voters' Choice Act is, this is a new law that was passed in 2016 that will modernize elections in California. Napa County is one that volunteered to be a pilot county for this, and what it does, what it allows is voters to choose how, when, and where to cast their ballot, by mailing every voter a ballot, expanding in-person early voting, and allowing voters to cast a ballot at any vote center within their county, rather than being, having to go to one individual polling place that they're assigned to. And that, that's really it. You can go to the Secretary of State's website and/or just type in Voters' Choice Act if you want to learn more about that. But it would be interesting to go attend the workshop and see what this, this is going to look like. It'll resemble a, a polling place, but it has different functions. And then my second announcement is we are still recruiting for the Napa County Mosquito Abatement District Yountville representative, and that position is open until filled, and you can find those applications on the town's website. And that's it. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Welcome back.
Thank you.
Are there any meeting reports? I know we have some listed, but they don't always have reports attached to them. Hearing none. I do want to recognize two people. I know with the events of a week and a half ago, and all the efforts that went into the Celebration of Life last night that was held at the Lincoln Theater, I do want to recognize Samantha and Whitney Diver McAvoy, our Chamber CEO, for the incredible work you did to bring that all together. So, thank you, and it was, um, it was a beautiful celebration, and it involved many moving parts, many people at all levels of local, state, and federal government and agencies. So it was a very, very much a community effort to recognize and celebrate the three women that were, that were lost. So thank you very much.
Mayor, I have a...
Yes.
...a council comment, too. I, I think, I would just personally like to thank our mayor, as well as our town manager, Steve, and all of our staff for just, it's hard to say the right word, a remarkable job these last 10, 10 days. I think we all, council agrees, and I know you've done so much for the community, and everyone that has spoken to me about it really feels that we really did it well, as in a very difficult time. So thanks.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. I appreciate that, and...
Ditto.
Thank you. And we do have a Napa Valley Conversation Thursday night, 6:00 PM at the Community Center, that is focusing on the healing of our community, and also mental health services that are currently available to anyone in the community. We have a panel of speakers that is being finalized, again, at the state and the county and local levels, to talk about the incident, the aftermath, and how we can continue to move forward as, as a community. So everyone is invited to attend Thursday, 6:00 PM at the Community Center. I believe it's in the Heritage Room now. Is that correct? Yes. I also want to recognize during all this, we did have Yountville Live happening this last weekend for four days. It looked to be extremely well-attended. I spoke two nights addressing what had just happened, so that the visitors to Yountville were aware. And I want to recognize also Bobby Jacobs and the entire Yountville Live team for helping raise funds to support the Three Brave Women Fund that will go to families and other services that are focused on helping our military veterans that need our support. So thank you very much to Yountville Live. Any other reports or announcements? Seeing no others, if, if I may, I will move to adjourn in honor of Dr. Jennifer Gray-Goak, Christine Lober, and Dr. Gonzalez Shushariva.
Second. Just a moment. Oops.
Can we just do it live?
Oh, you can do it live.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Good night.